Everybody, welcome to the October 21st, 2025 Select Board Meeting at Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Mass. In the sala meeting room, the time being seven o'clock. Just a note to everybody, this meeting is being recorded by Canton Community Television, and it can be viewed at later dates. First on the agenda will be public comment period, and I just have to read a statement prior to that. Public comment of this meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedback and concerns. However, it is not meant to be a question and answer format. There will be no response to any public comment when presented. The public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and up to three minutes per speaker. Those which should speak should stand at the microphone and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please state your name and town you live in. Your address is not required. I would ask all members of the audience to please be respectful of each speaker as well as each other. Anyone that does not wish to speak or unable to do so due to time limit may submit their comments in writing for the board's review in consideration. That being said, we'll start the public comment at 7:01.
Brenda Sweeney, Canton, my opinion. I'm here tonight to talk to our local murderers' little helpers. Not the little yellow pill the Rolling Stones sang about, but the actual people that helped the murderers after that horrific event that stole the life of Officer John O'Keefe. I'm curious, what's your exit strategy? Our local murderers thought they'd be successful, but they're having issues. They've had to constantly tweak their own exit strategy. But what's the exit strategy for you little helpers? In the beginning, you were like a carry-on bag that they were happy to have by their side, but as more information comes out, they'll get desperate and change their focus to family. You extra bags will get too heavy. They won't be able to carry you, too. When push comes to shove, they won't hesitate. The rats will desert the sinking ship, and you'll be on your own. If that rumor about the 4:00 AM radio dispatch call is true, it would have been a snowplow accident and dumped right in Lucky's lap, but a cracked taillight showed up, and they thought they found a patsy, so they pivoted. It'd be easy to pin it on the girl; she won't stand a chance. They needed your help to sell it in town once the deed was done. They had the chief, the DA, and his state troopers lined up. Piece of cake. This girl's toast. They assured you they'd owe you big time when all was said and done. So you drank the Kool-Aid. But Karen Reed refused to bow down. Then the FBI showed up. Sergeant Barrows and Lucky Lockren showed us the meaning of integrity, and now good old Mikey Proctors had 12 years of text messages pulled from the cloud. I wonder if you little helpers are mentioned in those messages. It doesn't matter that you didn't commit the murder; it's a conspiracy. You'll all be charged. So where does that leave you little helpers? Will you be able to call in that favor the murderers promised? Will they help you at the Mookley Courthouse? Pay your lawyer? Will they take care of your family? Feed them, clothe them, pay the mortgage while you're being fitted for an orange jumpsuit? Will your kids have to change their name and move out of state to be spared the shame? The murderers never thought twice about John, and Karen was simply a means to an end. Are you little helpers the patsies now? Or have you figured out your own exit strategy? You know these murderers will sink the bags to save themselves. Then you little helpers will be toast. Soggy toast at that. Wonder if somebody's already Googled "how long to sink bags." The citizens have kicked the old guard in town to the curb. With new board members, a new chief, and new police officers, ask yourself, who's going to save you now? We'll be back to watch the ship go down. Don't say we didn't warn you. Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll end the public comment period, and we'll start with the agenda. Mr. Albert.
All right. First up tonight, we have a public hearing regarding the application for the alteration of premises and transfer of a Section 15 All Alcohol License from New Cob Corner Liquor, Inc., 95 Washington Street, Unit 404, to Shaw's Supermarket, Inc., 95 Washington Street, Canton, Mass., 02021. Town of Canton Legal Notice, Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of Mass. General Laws as amended that the Canton Select Board, as the licensing board for the Town of Canton, will hold a public hearing regarding the application for the alteration of the premises and transfer of the Section 15 All Alcohol License from New Cob Corner Liquor, Inc., 95 Washington Street, Unit 404, to Shaw's Supermarket, Inc., 95 Washington Street, Canton, Mass., 02021. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, on or after 7:00 PM in the sala meeting room, Second Floor, Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Mass. Christopher M. Albert, Clerk, Canton Select Board. I move that the board open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair as well, 4-0. Public meeting is started. Do we have a... Please...
Mr. Chair, would you like us...
Yes, sir. That would be great. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cezula, McDermott Quilty, Miller &amp; Hanley, in Boston, Massachusetts, here on behalf of the applicant Shaw's Supermarkets, Inc. To my direct right is Ms. Zumira Como. She is the store director. She's also importantly the proposed manager of record on the liquor license. And sitting with us as well is Joseph Ferreira, who's the regional manager. As was read into the record, we are applying for a transfer of the all-alcoholic beverages license, package store license, literally two doors down from the New Cob Corner Liquor Store in the Village Shops Plaza to the Shaw's in the same plaza. We did submit some hearing materials to the board, I think, yesterday morning. Happy to go through those, but I also can give a brief overview if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Yes, sir. Obviously, a long-existing store in the community. It's an experienced operator. They have eight other liquor licenses in the Commonwealth. This would be their ninth, and actually would be their last due to the statute. They can only have nine. So this actually importantly is their choice to be the ninth in Massachusetts. And the other eight, two are in Boston at the Prudential and the TD Garden, right outside the TD Garden when you walk in to the main entrance, the new main entrance, Dartmouth, Rainham, Newton, and a few others, which are in the packet. Very good track record of operation throughout all the cumulative years of owning and operating those eight licenses. They've only had one violation, and that was from 10-plus years ago. So really good track record, great character and fitness of the applicant. As far as the specifics of the concept are concerned, this would be about a $500,000 renovation to allow for the new area within the store. The proposed section is only two aisles, aisle three and four, right when you walk in next to the produce section, and the end caps as well. So the total square footage is only 2,084 square feet of the store. It's a 64,000-square-foot store, so we're talking 3 1/4%, not the whole store at all, but just two aisles. It's actually a reduction, I think important for the board to note. It's a reduction in the square footage of the cellar space. So the cellar space is actually 2,500 square feet, and as I mentioned, this is 2,084, so 83% of the store. Not getting, you're not going from 2,500 square feet to 5,000 or 10,000, obviously not the whole store. So I think it's important to note that for the board. The alcohol sections will be contained within those aisles. You'll see in the floor plans, we also submitted pictures in their other stores. You know, the store is going to be open outside of the hours allowed for liquor sales. So what the plan is and what they've done successfully at other locations is to have these kind of retractable liquor cages, and they basically do not allow you to even physically enter those areas during non-sale hours. Notwithstanding the fact that the point of sale is shut down as well, you couldn't purchase it. So there's multiple layers here. What if it's open and somebody just walks out? You'll see in the packet that we submitted, it's kind of like a huge fence that retracts them, and they move it away when they're during sale hours. A few other things, if approved by the town and the state, they would be hiring an additional full-time liquor manager to operate this, as well as probably three to four new employees to help run, manage, and maintain the department. So there would be some new employment, including a pretty substantial one with the full-time liquor manager for the store. An amenity to shoppers, obviously walking two doors down is not a huge deal, but if you can go and get your steak for the grill and a six-pack of craft beer, or seafood, you know, nice shrimp or something like that with a bottle of wine, not having to go out again, come out to the plaza, go back, go back to the car twice, et cetera, is, you know, an amenity and a convenience for their shoppers and their customers, one that they use at, again, eight other stores to great success. Hours of operation, standard liquor hours of operation, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Sundays with the later hours. So we would be requesting that 10:00 AM opening on Sundays, not a 12. Also, Zumira is very experienced. She's been with Shaw's for 37 years in various positions. So definitely experienced, not only with the company, but she's also been a store director since 2001, over 20 years. And actually, she was the manager of record at their Franklin location for four years, 2013 to 2017, and they have liquor there. So she's very well experienced, not only with the company, everything else, but with actually operating with this company, with the liquor license in one of their other locations. Also, we did submit to the board, she has served safe liquor sales certified as well. The last thing I'll mention is just public need. Under Chapter 138, you have to show public need for any liquor license transfer to new location. I would suggest, without going into too much detail to the board, that that's been met because you have one in the plaza, and this is just being moved. This isn't a new license. It's being purchased from that store and being brought over. So happy to go into those in more detail, but we would suggest that public need is there because you found there to be a public need in this plaza, however many years ago when that license was first issued. Happy to pause here. I know that was a lot of information. Happy to go over more.
You answered quite a few of my questions as to where it was going. Does this affect the cashiers for age-wise? It doesn't, or it's just going to be monitored by the management?
So there's 168 associates in the store. 80% are over the age of 21, and 90% or so are over the age of 18. So there's only 20 cashiers, part-time, the whole, you know, part-time mostly, who are under the age of 18, and they would not be able to sell alcohol. If they're under the age of 18, they would have to, they can't touch it, they have to call over a manager on duty. If you're over 18, they'll be trained in order to do that. There'll be supervisors and things of that nature. So there's no plan to change or revise any of the current employees, but there obviously will be training, and they will use the best practices, which we did provide as part of our packet, in terms of tips training, internal training, procedures and things, to make sure that anybody who is not able to physically sell or touch the alcohol will not do so.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Do you have cameras on these aisles or in addition to the staff who will be there?
Not specific cameras. Well, there are cameras on all aisles, correct, Zumira?
There's cameras in the front of the store that can, you can zoom in on the aisles.
Okay.
There will not be more specific cameras, like the ones where you could see yourself on the screen when you're shopping. Those will not be installed. But they're not installed at any store, ma'am. This is the standard procedure. So there are, you know, in every aisle in most supermarkets, there are cameras, but it's not going to be more visible presence than what's there already, proposed.
Anybody else?
No, I don't think so.
Charlie, is everything, all the paperwork all in order?
All the paperwork's in order. Yes, sir.
Everything's good? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I think we're good on this. I think we could close the hearing.
All right. I move that the board, I mean, I move that the board close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 4-0. Next, Mr. Albert.
I move that the board approve the application for the alteration of premises and transfer of a Section 15 All Alcohol Liquor License from New Cob Corner Liquor, Inc., 95 Washington Street, Unit 404, to Shaw's Supermarket, Inc., 95 Washington Street, Canton, Mass., 02021.
Motion made?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 4-0.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Chair, if I, Jen?
I'm not Jen.
You're not Jen. If Jen's not here, I just want to say she's awesome. She's been super helpful, and I know that folks like her don't get a ton of, you know, shine time in these hearings if they're not here, but she's been very helpful for us throughout this process. I just want to pass that on.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Albert.
Next up, Mr. Walsh with the Building Department update, minus the flashcards.
Do I got to warm this up or anything?
Oh, you could. Do what you do.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Walsh.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I just wanted to give you a brief description update on the Building Department. Our goal is to ensure the public safety for the residents and the businesses of town. We have a staff of six right now. There's two building inspectors, one wiring inspector, plumbing and gas inspector, and two office administrators. We're currently in the process of hiring, or hoping to hire, another part-time building inspector at 25 hours per week. We do both the building and the zoning downstairs in our office. We have an annual budget of about $486,000, and over the last five years, we've averaged building permits have been $13.50, gas $3.90, plumbing $4.90, and wiring $7 1/4. Our revenue average over the last five years has been $1.4 million. So we might bring in a little bit more than we spent. Our functions include assisting contractors and residents with any concerns, helping them get their permits going to remodel new homes with the businesses coming into town, along with the plan review and issuing permits. We perform the various inspections required so they can occupy the dwelling or their business. And in addition to the standard, you know, everyone kind of knows what the Building Department does for the remodeling, the new homes or the businesses, but we also do the annual inspections of the schools. We've got the five public schools, we've got the regional, we've got St. John's, we've got two Judge Rothenberg facilities, along with all their group homes. We do the one-day liquor licenses and the annual liquor license for any of the restaurants that serve alcohol. This all came out after the station nightclub tragedy. We also inspect special events. We have the Fourth of July celebration this past weekend. We had the Irish Beer Festival, other events in the past. The town administrator may recall, we had the Reebok World Meetings, we had CrossFit Games, we had concerts at the Cultural Center, we had Life is Good concerts. You know, those attracted like 5,000 people a night. We respond to emergency calls from both police and fire. You know, with the gas inspector, a lot of times it's odors of carbon monoxide, we have faulty equipment. We're coming into that time of year, we get more calls because people haven't maintained their furnaces, and everything's getting switched on, so they're getting either real odors, you know, carbon monoxide odors, or they get false, you know, readings. But we're there to help them. As far as the wiring inspector, he gets a lot of calls when electric appliances overheat. You know, the fire department notice, gets called for a burning odor. They look, they do their investigation, and they call out, you know, Mr. Levis to follow up. With me, and the rest of us, it's usually fires, our cars into buildings. And we also work with the Board of Health. We have tenant complaints. That seems to be the number-one issue right now. And we also do hoarding issues, which we've done in the past with all the previous Board of Health agents. You know, it's not always the most popular one. I think in the past, we've actually shut down a haunted house for a safety issue. Well, it would have been, had various safety issues, that's why we shut it down. But, you know, some of the current projects we have going on in town is, we have Rivian is moving into 125 Shawnet. That's going to, they have two facilities. This will be their second facility in Eastham, Mass. They have, their primary one is in Chelsea, and now they're going to move a second facility, which will do sales and service, down to 125 Shawnet. We got 30 and 40 Copper Smith. That's going to start framing this week, 62 units there. We have 399 at Ponsett Street, which is part of the MBTA zoning laws. The demo permit for Old Nick's should probably be issued within the next couple of days, and then they've got the foundation permit going after that. Just to give you brief numbers is that, according to Building Department records, we've issued 340, well, we've created 347 dwelling units since May 19 down at Plymouth Rubber. You know, our department, we also enforce the zoning bylaws. A lot of times that, you know, it's trivial, it's hours of operation for businesses conducting businesses in a residential area. You have too many cars somebody's keeping at their house. We let businesses know what zone they allow to, they are permitted to operate in town. And then, of course, we got everybody's fan favorite, the lawn signs. That's why, I had to mention it. It was something, you know, that was the drawback out of COVID. Everyone got stuck, stuck there, two cents on the lawn signs. At this time, we have not issued any building permits for ADUs. We do, however, have a couple that seem like they're ready to go. I anticipate we'll probably get something with the next month or two on those two. You know, we got a, we get a great staff of six. They're dedicated to their job. Our philosophy's simple, we just treat people the way they want to be treated, and that's the way I was taught by Timmy Roneen, by Chris Lasky. You know, they taught me the ropes that way. My best teacher probably down there was Jean Finnegan, town administrator. She let you know the right and wrong way of doing things, which was very helpful. But we got a good group of, you know, town departments here. We work well together, you know, just for the common goal, what's best for the town of Canton. Right now, a couple of things we're trying to accommodate is online permitting, I mean, our online payment for our online permitting process. Seems the program's not capable of doing that right now, and we're also probably looking into the future for credit card payment, because, you know, any of us know our kids don't carry cash. So that's going to be the way of the world. So with that, any questions that I can help you with?
Have you received your new truck?
That is on order.
On order?
It is, it is finally on order. They will not give us a delivery date yet.
Okay.
I know, because now Arafat's chomping for mine.
There's always another use.
He's bigger than me. He can take it.
Any questions from the board? Yes, sir.
And so the staff that you're trying to hire for 25 hours?
Yep.
Are you viewing that as that would eventually grow into more hours and possibly succession plan for you? Or is it just, we're that busy, we need...
It's a little bit, it's a little bit of both. We are that busy. We're doing a lot of preventive maintenance instead of taking the initiative. You know, ideally, you'd like to get someone, I came in here, I like 38, worked for three years as a local, and then took over Chris's spot when he went up to Bedford. That's the ideal plan, but we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves either. Get the best available candidate. Because the turnover would probably be drastic in the next couple of years. So it would be good to have someone on board to handle that transition.
Yeah, makes sense. One more.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Walsh, you and I have worked together on some resident complaints on 138, and we know it's simply bandwidth. Would this new position help with that, like on the enforcement side of, when you were talking about lawn signs, that's what triggered it?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I got 25 in the back of the car now from the food truck thing. But that's a different story. Yeah, I mean, it's going to help on the basic policing. You can only go up and down 138 so many times right now, myself and Mac.
Yep.
If you get another body to do it, then, you know, it's the repetitiveness that could dissuade them from sticking the signs out there all the time.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, can I have the assurant? Question through you. Mr. Walsh, could you just explain to the board your role in working with the assessor and the finance director in determining the revenue projections for the upcoming fiscal year? Because I think that's an important thing that you do.
I think so.
It's not in those notes.
I know.
Appreciate you, Crips. All we try to do is we try to determine new growth. And it's not, that is more or less new structures that are coming into town that are taxable. It's in a decline hour right now. I mean, we've, because we've pretty much grown out. Unless we got substantial addition to a facility, say like with 30 D N Road, it was a substantial addition, but we're not seeing the new growth because it's an unoccupied building. It's just a shell right now. But that new growth is going to add to our tax base, and that's one of the keys to, you know, Randy doing the budget puts that all together with what he gets from the state, and he can determine, that helps determine capital, it helps determine the operating budgets. Because he can, from there, then he has the new growth, the revenues, and from there he can determine, you know, what the next budget cycle will allow. Is that all right?
That was perfect. Almost.
No wonder I didn't like the fire department six years ago. They were tough then.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Walsh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good luck with your search for your employee.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Albert.
Next up is the Planning Department update. Connor Murphy's here to discuss it.
Here comes the new growth of your truck.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. Just want to start with a brief department overview. The department's filled with two full-time employees, an administrative assistant at 35 hours a week, myself as the town planner at 40 hours a week. We're primarily staffed two boards, the Planning Board, which is an elected five-member board, staggering three-year terms, and the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I myself work with other boards and committees as directed and based on different projects that are going on. I currently hold several appointments as town planner. Most notably is my work with MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, as the council rep for the town of Canton, and then the sub-region rep for the town as well. I also serve on the Canton Affordable Housing Trust, Sustainability Climate Action Plan Committee, as well as the Permit Advisory Committee. Planning Department covers several areas. On any given day, we wear several different hats. Mostly, we cover town planning, economic development, housing, transportation, and we're the lead on several master plan action items and their implementation. Briefly start town planning. Typically, we're the lead on most zoning amendments. Our office is contacted on development inquiries and permitting. As I mentioned earlier, we're the lead on a lot of the master plan implementation. As it stands right now, we're currently working on an action plan update with the Master Plan Implementation Committee. That's expected to be completed by January 2026 with a presentation provided to the board once done. I would like to know, of all the action items, the town planner is the lead of about 109 of them right now. We're also working with our Conservation Department on an open space recreation plan. We are currently leading a municipal vulnerability preparedness 2.0 grant. For those of you familiar, there are two MVP grants going on right now. There's MVP grant that Christine Meany is leading through Stormwater, that's the first MVP grant. The 2.0 grant is a little bit different. The first MVP grant focuses on infrastructure and regulatory work. The second one focuses on the social impacts, most notably of climate change on our most vulnerable communities, right? And those are environmental justice areas found at the lower portions of town. That is a two-phase approach. That's expected to be completed by November of 2026. Also, I am the Green Communities Act lead for the town of Canton. I manage the reporting, which is due this November. The reporting consists of our energy usage, any growth that the town has had, any vehicles we have purchased... we have purchased, things along those lines. That reporting's provided. The reporting is key for us to be eligible for grant opportunities through the Green Communities Act. The last grant we did receive under the Green Communities Act was in September, and it was for $250,000 for the HVAC replacement at the senior center. In addition, our department works on some of the implementation climate action plan. We're currently working on that right now. We had gone out to bid for a consultant on some of the energy management portion of the climate action plan, and there's more to come from that. In addition to that, our department typically handles a lot of the grant applications and also provides assistance to other departments within the town. Economic development, so we'll start first with business retention, growth, and addition. We're currently working with the Chamber of Commerce on small business grant opportunity utilizing ARPA funds for web services. We already have one application completed, and we have about two to three in the pipeline. That's expected to last up until December of 2026, where we then lose the remaining ARPA funds. The department's also working towards grant funding through mass development in the Department of Economic Development under the state for facade improvement in Canton Center. It's in cohort with the recent zoning amendments that we made at the last town meeting for the Canton Center design. It's encouraged to help spur some of the changes down there. It is a forgivable grant. So if a business does decide to entertain those items, we can then give them the grant and, and refund them for the work. We are looking at furthering economic development within three key areas, Shawmet Road, 138 Corridor, and Royal Street. As part of that, we're looking at transportation demand management, which is last mile services with connectivity between our commercial areas and transit hubs. We are currently applying for two different grants. One is a regional grant application for the Shawmet Road area, and that's going to be connected to portions of Westwood and so on, but eventually leading at the 128 Community Rail Station. And then we're going to be submitting an individual application for the 138 corridor, mostly the Dan Road and John Road area, with the end result transporting workers from the second and third shift to Canton Junction. We already have a last mile shuttle program in place at Royal Street, so not much work needed there. And then, in working with the Economic Development Committee, we're looking to apply to grant programs for funding or technical assistance towards economic development for the 138 corridor. We have done work there before, at the request of the EDC, looking to do some, some more work there on design standards, rebranding, some streetscape improvements, but as well as incorporating new uses and more users come to that commercial district. And then, working with the EDC on certain matters outside of just 138. Transportation. As I mentioned before, we are working on transportation demand management practices in key commercial areas. Working with Tom O'Rourke at the Chamber in supporting him at MPO for state roadway improvements, and that includes state roadways here in the town, along with the interchange at 93 and 95. And then, working with MAPC on regional support for transition areas. To better define it, transition areas are those cut-throughs, going from one highway to the other side of the highway, maybe cutting through Canton to get to the southern portions or the northern portions of the area, and trying to make that a little bit more, for better words, feasible. And then, housing. Currently, the department submitted a feasibility grant application for Ruben Court, which is owned by the housing authority. We're hoping to receive either technical assistance or up to $30,000 in a grant to be able to look at the feasibility of that site. As always, we work with our housing coordinator on maintaining the town subsidized housing index above 10%. In addition to that, one of the last projects in that category, our department's leading a gridley school reuse and feasibility study that started back in September. We were given some initial test fit scenarios, and hopefully there will be a presentation to you sometime in January or February when it's completed. About sums it up.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I just had two quick questions myself. One on the grant for the HVAC for the Senior Center. Is that for purchase of a particular equipment, or is that for design and equipment, or is that complete installation?
Equipment and complete installation. We had the design. We have been working with a green communities contractor who had given us a price. We had also gone to capital for that request as well. So the grant is a good opportunity to subsidize the capital requests we had made for those improvements. It'll cover the equipment and the installation. It also covers the building management system as well, the BMS for the senior center.
And with that being said, how does that pertain to the town of Canton and its bid laws in going out for bid? This is, seems to be a specialized grant for a particular group to perform the work, and this is all covered under a state statute? Is that what?
Correct, yes. If I may, Mr. Chairman, it, under the Green Communities Act, contracts under $300,000 should not require you to go out to bid for those, those services.
And, all right, so that's one question I have. That's going to be continued tomorrow night at the BIC, because there's been a lot of questions on that particular project, as to what they're using. And if you're available tomorrow, that would be great. If not, we're going to be talking to Rob from Facilities, and hopefully we'll get some answers on that. Every project goes to the town, usually goes to the BIC, and I know a lot's been done with that. I just want to follow up to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's on that one.
Certainly.
And the second question I had, and I think you answered it, was the Ruben Court feasibility grant. I take that is to look at the overall site up there and the available property that's around there for possible development?
Correct, yes, or extending the development there.
Okay, I'm good. That answers my questions, thank you. Anybody?
Yes. Oh, forgive me if you mentioned the timeline, but if you did, I didn't absorb it. So the gridley school reuse and feasibility study, what's the timeline on that?
Expected, the full study's expected to be completed by January or February.
Oh, great, okay.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Yep. So Connor, I'm not asking you to give an answer now, and, you know, maybe through the town administrator. It'd be good if we got an update on where we are with the housing, subsidized housing and the progress on maintaining, because it's three years away from when the first big one comes off the books. So I'm very interested in what steps are being taken to make sure that we stay above our threshold.
Certainly.
You can do that.
Mr. Albert?
I'm good.
I would just like to say that the transition from our previous town planner, TJ Torres, to Connor, has gone so smooth. Connor has stepped in, it's been seamless. He's an incredible resource, incredibly knowledgeable, couldn't be happier with, with our selection. And Braintree's losses, Canton's gained, so he's doing a great job.
Thank you, Connor, appreciate it. Thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Walsh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, this one's for town administrator, discussion of Department of Elder and Human Services' request for the use of 816 Washington, formerly St. Gerard's Church.
Yes, this is a request from the DEHS Director, Diane Tynan, to use the upper floor of 1860 Washington Street, which is our current polling place. She anticipating some of the program, programs that aren't going to be able to be run during the HVAC project. I think she's going to lose access to her, her large area. We're going to try to maintain the office space. But she's looking to be able to use that to relocate some of the classes that she runs that have, you know, larger, you know, numbers of students. I spoke with Tracy Kenny, and she's fine as long as, obviously, we don't schedule anything during election season, but central maintenance can certainly relocate some of the, the voting equipment and make that space available for the senior center to run some programs during the construction. So I'm seeking, or Diane is seeking your permission to use that space.
I have no issue with it. Does anybody have any comments or issues?
Separation anyway, so.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Okay, we're good with that.
Yep, I'll let it out.
All right, next up, consider accepting and authorizing the use of the gift in accordance with the terms there on Mass General Law 44, subsection 53A, the following donations to the Department of Elder and Human Services. $200 from Judy Adams in the memory of her husband Fred Adams, $25 from Joanne Wheeler, $200 from Geraldine Wilson in the memory of Kay Nicholson and Fred Adams. Next, consider accepting and authorizing the u-
Was that a motion?
That was a mo-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
It's a motion.
Number two, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'll second that.
I move.
Well, he's got more, there's 20, he did 200.
I have another, it's-
There's three of them, or you don't want to do them separate?
So they're separate, because one's going to Elder and Human Services and the other one's-
The first three go into the Department of Elder and Human Services. The next one's going somewhere else.
Okay, so we got-
Motion to be made, and seconded.
On the first one, made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 4-0.
Next, the move that the board accept and authorize the use of a gift in accordance with their terms there under Mass General Law 44, subsection 53A, donation of $18 from Michael and Leslie Shane for Canton Alliance Against Substance Abuse.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 4-0.
Next, the move that the board accept and authorize the use of the gift in accordance with the terms there under Mass General Law 44, subsection 53A, the grant of $50,000 from Outfront Media for the Shawmet in 95 locations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 4-0.
Vendor warrant for the total week of 10, 1, 2025, $3,165,370.91. The payroll warrant total for the week of 10, 1, 2025, $2,38,281.62. The vendor warrant total for the week of 10, 9, 2025, $1,413,162.21. The vendor warrant total for the week of 10, 16, 2025, $2,494,918.11. The payroll warrant total for the week of 10, 16, 2025, $1,940,608.4. The payroll warrant total for the week of 10, 16, 2025, $8,151.69. Next, the move that the board approve the cemetery commitments in the amount of $2,575.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 4-0.
Next, the move that the board approve the cemetery lot perpetual care deeds.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 4-0.
Next, the move that the board approve the minutes from the select board meeting of September 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 4-0.
And back to you, Mr. Dooty, for your update.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Just one, actually, no, I got a few things, but I'll start with, I have a notice from Diane Tynan at the Department of Elder and Human Services, and Arafat Knight from the Veterans Department. This is a Thanksgiving dinner for older adults and community members in need. They invite those folks for a Thanksgiving dinner, which is a new tradition this year, to provide a place for people to go who otherwise may not have a place to go on Thanksgiving. It's going to be on Wednesday, November 26th, the day before Thanksgiving, at the Canton Senior Center at 12:00 PM. It's sponsored by DEHS and the Veterans Department. RSVP is necessary, so if you'd like to go or like to attend, you can call the senior center at 781-828-1323, and if you need a ride, transportation can be provided. So we hope that those folks who are in need will join them for a warm meal and good company and celebrate Thanksgiving together.
Charlie, are they looking for volunteers for that event?
She did not say, but I could, I'll, I'll find out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then, just a few updates on some of the things going on in the executive office. So the negotiations with Republic Services are ongoing to determine the credits that will be provided to the town of Canton for work not performed during the strike. We have three invoices for July, August, and September that are in question, and we are negotiating with Republic to come to a fair settlement for Canton, so that accurately reflects Canton's cost in, in, you know, managing the strike. So we hope, hopefully, we'll, we'll have some agreement in the next couple of weeks. The police chief application period ends October 27th. Thus far, we've received approximately 23 applications for police chief. We find that during the end of the application period, we'll get some more applications from chiefs who are kind of waiting until this thing is nearer to the end to apply. So I'll keep you updated on that. Once we have those applications, we'll work with our consultant to kind of screen them out and decide who out of that, those, that group of applicants we want to move forward in the process. And then, that's it. Those, that, those are kind of the two big things going on right now in the office. Among all the other things, and I'll echo the gentleman from, the attorney from Shaw's, Jen is, you know, working daily on liquor license renewals and things like that, and she's, as always, doing a bang-up job.
So just a couple other updates. The William Armando Golf Tournament tomorrow is on. Hopefully the rains, the rain will shine. Hopefully the rain starts by nine, so we can have a wonderful day in honor of Bill and raise some money for good use. And I believe it's Sunday, the Halloween Parade.
Ooh, that's a good question. I'm not positive on that.
I believe Sunday, what's that, at 1 o'clock at the Bank of Canton parking lot? So I just wanted to remind everybody about the big Halloween parade.
Are they still doing the trunk or treat at the end?
Yeah.
They're doing trunk or treat. They have a whole bunch of entertainment, I guess, at the high school after the parade. So hopefully, we have a wonderful Halloween celebration. So that's, that was my ad, Charlie.
That's a good one. I feel like I didn't do my job.
Mr. Albert?
Any, all right, so next, the board will hold its next meeting on Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, 7:00 PM at the Sala Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street. I move that the board end tonight's select board meeting at 7:47.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair as well, 4-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
People don't come to town meeting. People don't want to come to town meeting. Where this is all heading, and I'm not on the side, but where this is all heading, the real end solution to all of this is representative government. It's the end of open town meeting, because people can't come, people don't want to come, the information's provided, they don't read it. So that's, that's the direction you're headed. You're headed towards a representative government in town, because that way, people can elect who they want to represent them, and the representative, the legislature can then do budgeting throughout the year, and, and it's not once a year, here's $120 million being, being voted once a year. It, it actually provides better service and better government to the town. I, I don't both, I, I don't like it. I like open town meeting, but if you look at everything that everyone's been saying, that's, that's the solution. And maybe it doesn't happen tomorrow, but maybe 10 years from now, we're looking at representative government to solve all the problems that everybody's saying.
And for those who think that may be a path, and it very well may be, that would be through a change in the charter, which we are not looking at here. But if the, if the motivations were there, at some point, somebody will bring an article for a charter commission, and they will make a recommendation like what we're doing with, with the bylaws, and then town meeting will decide if it shifts to, to, to that new form of government. So it's a great observation, and a lot of communities have, have taken that up. Anything else? Last word?
Yes.
Last, last word.
To your point on the, sorry, Chris Stack, Chair of CBC, but again, not in that capacity. To your point about the, the lack of reading and, and people not getting involved with the newspaper, I, I happen to agree. I read the Canton Citizen religiously. I think everyone should, should get it to their home. But there is a reality, whether we like it or not, that there is a change in the way people are receiving their news and receiving their information. And I'm wondering if perhaps we just need to make sure that we're providing the information on the medium that people are receiving it or want to receive it or able to receive it. And I don't know what that is. I'm not here to make a recommendation. But if we're saying we know people are not reading the newspaper, then maybe the answer is not, people should read the newspaper, but instead, where should we put this information such that people can see it regularly?
Well, Mr. Oberlin's going to do some TikToks, and I'll do some-
I was hoping Snapchat.
I'll do some Twitters, tweets.
Just so you're aware, the executive office was budgeted to have a communication specialist. So, we are currently, actually, it's been posted. We're taking resumes in, so we're, that's in the works.
Love that. Thank you so much.
Sure.
No TikToks?
Maybe.
Okay.
Never know.
If you're up for it. Alan, so I want to say two things with respect to our deputy moderator. If you'll just keep-
Unofficially.
Yeah, unofficial. I want to keep it brief, but we're going to have another, or we're going to have another meeting for the general public. So, I'm going to defer to you for a few minutes, but go ahead.
I didn't know, you know, the thing is, I thought it was going to be a fifteen-minute public comment.
There is, so, but can you?
When is the general public meeting getting comments?
We will, we'll get a chance to schedule it as soon as we get to our business part of our meeting. It'll, yeah, we'll schedule it quickly. Because my sense is, you've got a lot to share.
Well, I would like to, you know, I would like to have another day to fully do this and, you know, info, because if I'm not going to have the chance to, you know, to experience. But just to start, and this is, I'm just trying to start, because we haven't discussed, I haven't really had discussions with the Democrats, how to be about, in terms of, you know, how to run a moderator caucus in terms of when, if, when Dick's, you know, Doc's, Richard Doc State decides to retire from the position, how we replace it.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I do want to ask if you will indulge me to hold your comments to our next public meeting and then have the opportunity to talk to your Democratic colleagues if they have an opinion or they could come to that meeting. We definitely want to take that information in, but I have done you a disservice by not giving you enough time to do what you need to do this evening. So, would you defer?
I mean, like I said, it's like, just the thing about this is like, in terms of the election, you know, on the ballot, if we go to November, I would like to have the moderator on the ballot. But April election, it would not be realistic to have it on the ballot in an April election because of how the Mass Moderators Association trains their moderators in terms of they want to have their classes in March, plus the fact that our library still hasn't had copies of the new Town Meeting Time fourth edition. We tried to get this into the library, but they haven't received it yet. I would like to have those in the library so that people can read it and not feel they have to purchase like a digital copy, you know, forty-nine dollars to put it on the phone.
Okay.
But that's all I can say at this time, but I would like to schedule a, I would like to schedule a day where I can bring, you know, bring my thing in fall, you know, in fall, because I guess we're not going to have time today, so.
But again, I've done you a disservice. However, there's another, one of these sessions that will be planned for the general public.
Then please, then please, nobody to time, okay?
I will, for sure. Thank you. All right, anything else? We have a little bit of business to pick up on. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes that are dated August twenty-first. Motion has been made. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And we should set a date for the next one of these. Is everybody comfortable having one more of these and open to the general public and perhaps some other committees, perhaps Planning Board? Well, we'll figure out. Louis and I can work together and, Susan, we can work together to invite a couple more folks that are connected to town meeting and including our friend and colleague here. Next meeting? It'll be in October. Looks like Monday's worked this time. Would Monday work again?
Would for me.
Which Monday? You've got Columbus Day and then-
It's the thirteenth Columbus Day?
Yeah. The twenty or twenty-seven?
I would say the twenty-seventh.
I would say twenty-seventh, if that works for folks. Everybody okay with twenty-seventh?
I'm just curious about the Jewish holidays, because I don't have that on this calendar. I just want to make sure we're-
Twenty-seventh would be after Central Storm. We're right, Yom Kippur is this week, and then we, then next week is, the first two days of the coat are Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, and then the following Tuesday and Wednesday of the month would be Shemiyah's at Central Storm.
Are we clear on the twenty-seventh of October?
I think we, yes, twenty-seventh of October is definitely, you know.
Okay.
Definitely passed at that, so.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that? All right, we'll get together on the twenty-seventh for another public session.
Location to be determined?
Yeah, maybe. We'll figure it out. Library or somewhere.
And then we'll, and then we'll debrief in November with what's discussed in these two meetings.
Yeah, depending upon how long the next one is too. You know, I think tonight-